Welcome, everyone. Just looking for our video feed. All right, there we go. Thanks. Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 25, 2017. This is a special meeting, City Council meeting. And we are, for the audience viewing, we're at the Veterans Memorial Hall. And we have a presentation tonight, our Economic Development Strategic Plan. We'll go through that outline. We have some public comment, and we'll have some discussion by our council, and staff, and community members. At this point, we, I'm just going to go through a little organization here. So we're kind of at the roundtable here, and we have the monitor up, we have folks in the audience. We don't have speaker flips, slips, but we can open it up for public comment for any of those folks who'd like to speak to public comment on this item. We should have time at the end to do that as well, but I think we'll start out with public comment. Is there anybody like to speak for public comment? Seen anybody in the audience? None? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back, and at the end, we'll have some opportunity to do that as well. And I just want to open up for staff, and Mr. Buckingham, you want to do any introductions? And then we'll get going on the presentation. Welcome.
Would love to. Thank you. So, welcome back to Audrey and Fawn from Chabon Associates. Just as a brief intro, the City Council, two budgets ago, recognized a need for the city to have an economic development strategic plan, a little different from a general plan, and even from the economic part of the general plan. But this was a specific strategic plan to look at potential economic development in the city of Morro Bay. So that was two years ago in the budget, and we've been working on this for about a year. Audrey and Fawn and their team spent a long period of time talking to stakeholders here in the city, visiting the city, visiting people in the city, traveling and looking at different parts of the city, and then putting together this strategic plan for your consideration as we develop a vision for economic development going forward in the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to Audrey and Fawn.
Good afternoon. I'm Audrey Taylor with Chabon Concepts. We're an economic development consulting firm, and we focus on working with probably the smaller cities, smaller and medium-sized cities, even though we work with --
Is the mic on? Does the little green dot on?
I think I do.
Green dot's on.
Okay, good. All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Fawn.
We've been in business for 35 years doing economic development throughout the state of California and also across the U.S. Fawn has been a partner on this project and has done many of our projects together throughout the U.S. And we have two other partners that are not here with us tonight. One is Sarah Merly, who is an economic development economist, and David Doherty, who was a landscape architect. And when we were here last spring about this time was in the annex where we were looking at the different parts of the city and kind of drawing out where we thought economic activity is focused. And tonight, what we want to do is really, we know we have to be done by 5:30, so we want to go through this. We want to make this a work session, so we appreciate your asking questions, interrupting us, and asking questions about what we're doing. But I do want to just say, to start off, is that this is really about economic growth. You know, the focus of an economic development plan is how do you create more economic activity that generates revenue for the city and also economic activity for the community through So, we often start, and the question that we get asked often is, you know, why do an economic development roadmap? I'm not used to this. And I think it's pretty clear in here in Morro Bay of why that you wanted to do this. And you had a significant impact, negative impact, you know, to the community when the power plant closed. So that was probably an $18 to $20 million impact to the region when that happened, much less you probably lost $3 to $4 million of spending that went happen in the community. So that has rippled through your community and really, I think, awakens you to the fact, okay, we really have to pay attention to economic development, and how do we create more activity and generate revenues for the city? Kind of like, which button do I push? So today, for the work session, what we'd like to do is go through three things. And one of those is the approach and process that we use. Number two is to really look at the key initiatives that we have outlined as the roadmap. And number three is, how do you implement? And most often, when we do an economic development plan or a roadmap, what we hear back from the community is, okay, these are all great ideas, but how do we implement them? How do we move forward? And particularly with a community that may not have a lot of resources to move those forward. So, a big part of this plan and the way that it's laid out is that you can take pieces of the plan and implement those, so you don't have to try to do it all at one time. And you need to think of your economic development roadmap in conjunction with all the other planning that you are doing. So, right now, you're going through a lot of plans, which is very good, you know, to be planning out that future, understanding what your infrastructure needs are, where you're going. So all of these tend to fit together. And it is interesting from our standpoint, because we were looking at your city from an economic development standpoint. While you're having a general plan going on, you have a waterfront strategic plan coming on, but we're all coming out with almost the same recommendations to you. So that affirms that we're all kind of thinking around the same things about what can happen and how do you move forward with these types of activities. So the approach and the process, so kind of our first step, and any step in an economic development strategic plan, is just understanding the community itself, you know, what's going on. So we do a lot of review of what is happening. And at the time, of course, you still had these plans that were going on. We kind of take a look at all the resources that you have, and that means your resource partners, as well as the planning that you have going on. And we're typically looking for the assets that you have in your community that make you unique and different, where you can have businesses that will invest in the community. We look at the current projects, and again, you have a lot of current projects. I don't think it's very often that we see a small city this size, a city that has as many projects moving forward as you do. So that is very commendable about what you have moving forward, because you're noticing and you are taking action for change. And that is very positive, because investors who are going to look at your community recognize immediately that you recognize the fact that you have to make change. And the last piece is the research and the stakeholder input. Particularly, again, I think in a small town, it's very important to listen to your stakeholders. Because in moving economic development forward, we don't have the days of redevelopment any longer, so it is a public-private partnership. You must engage the public sector, the private sector, in the vision and how you create economic development. You know, they need to be coming to the table through that process. Couple of the things that we did, we did a lot of interviews prior to coming here. Some of you received calls from us before we arrived, and then we actually interviewed you when we were onsite. We spent a week onsite within the community. There was a team of three of us here in the community. And we did a perception, what we call a perception survey, which was sent out to the businesses, and had a very good response. About 139 people responded to that survey that gave us perceptions of what they felt about the community. And that helped us gear what we were looking at. So in creating a roadmap in any economic development, and there are certain things that we look for, there's about five things that we look for. We start off with the place in the market within the context of where you sit yourself. You know, what does your place look like? What are the assets that you have? What are the uniqueness of that community of yourself? And then it's looking at the market that's around you. You know, where do you sit within that market? So, we can take into account the uniqueness of who you are, as well as what's happening around you. So that's kind of number one. Number two is, we look at the economic sectors. And the economic sectors tells us what's driving the economy. And I think all of you know, kind of tourism drives most of your economy, the hospitality, the tourism in that area. By losing the power plant, you lost what we call a traded sector. When we look at the economy, and on page five, I think it is in your book, if you have it, it might be on page six, page six, we have three things. So we look at the economy as three drivers of the economy. One is what we call the traded sector. Those are the businesses that sell goods and services outside of the area. Sometimes they're called export. And so they're exporting their product or their goods and services outside of the area, and they're bringing money into the area. They have the highest economic impact of anything. If you think of manufacturing or anything like that, that would be a traded sector. A tech company would be a traded sector. Second to that is the visitor market. So that's your tourism, people that are coming in and spending money here, so that you're having new money come in and it's spent within the community. The third leg is what is population-driven, and that's all of you buying goods and services within the community. With all three of those, that's how you create that economic activity through those processes. So we break the community down into these three sectors when we're looking at the sectors. And we look at, okay, in this community, what is really driving that? And you'll see on page seven, there's a chart there with a big red circle in the middle of it, which is your hospitality and your tourism that really drives it. But you have other niche markets that are starting, you know, that are, we would call them emerging, that are starting to show up. That's an advantage. The challenge that you have is that if you were to get more, where would you put them? Because you're a built-out city. So it's very difficult when you say, okay, we want to go and attract these types of businesses. You really have to step back and say, okay, if I did attract them, where would they go in that process? So when we look at our economic sectors, we're like trying to see, okay, what, where is the advantages in that sector to bring those types of companies, and what is driving the economy?
Can we interrupt you and ask questions as we go along?
Absolutely. Please do.
Because you're talking about a figure that I did not understand.
Okay.
So I would like you to explain that to me, if you wouldn't mind, what the two axes are and how we should interpret this.
Yes. So the Xs are on there, I don't have my glasses on. So high concentration is on the bottom right of negative growth. So, high growth or location above is growth industry.
Audrey, could you keep the mic down, please, for it?
Okay.
With, or follow the mic somehow, it helps. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, keep track of me. So below the line is the negative growth. So your businesses are employing less employees than they would. And above the line are those that are growing. Those that have a low concentration are on the left side of the line, and the high concentration are on the right side.
And so what is FIRE?
FIRE is your insurance, financial, real estate. Oops. All right. Yeah. So all of these follow the Employment Development Department listing, and that's how they're listed. So that's how you tell the employees, how many employees you have in the different sectors.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay. And we can go back and put some more notes in there. Yeah, I'm glad you asked the question. Please do. Yeah. Fawn is adding that. So, the third thing that we look at is the human capital. You know, often in economic development, when you're looking particularly for businesses and to grow your economy, that means jobs. You know, how do you create jobs? And so you're looking at, you know, what is the skills that we have in our workforce? And you're fortunate, you have a skilled workforce. Eighty percent of it commutes out of this area for jobs, you know, to the area. But you also attract workers, about 74% that are attracted to this area. But you have a very highly educated population group here, so educational attainment is high. So you have a good workforce here, so that speaks to it. So then the fourth thing that we look at is the built environment. And this is the piece that is most important to Morro Bay, is this piece. So, we look at what we call economic centers. And those are the areas within the community that are creating economic activity, so within your area. So you have four areas in Morro Bay that really generate economic activity. So that's going to be North Main, Quintana, Downtown, and Embarcadero. So we segment those out, so you can look further into that area of how, within this district or center, we call them centers, can we create more economic activity within that area to do that? And so, and we're going to go through that. We also look for, okay, do we have any opportunity or catalyst sites? Things that can stimulate economic activity? And we call those opportunity sites or catalyst sites. Something where something significant can go on. And we look at those. And then we look at, you know, how is the city working with the private sector in public-private collaboration? And that has to do with, how are you communicating with your community itself? How do you work with new developers coming in? How do you work with the small businesses? How are you interfacing with businesses? And the fifth one is just looking at your current planning and project development that you're working on now. You know, is it taken you 10 years to do a project? Or are you pushing them through pretty quickly? Do you have a vision? Are you working on things? And I would say, here, you're doing a very good job about planning for the future. So interesting in talking with the stakeholders, so we did about 40 interviews, personal interviews, either by phone or in person, plus the survey. And there was really four things that came back from the stakeholders that were really important to them. And number one was creating place. That sense of place was very important to them. We heard often, you know, could we improve our curb appeal? You know, and I see heads shaking on that one. So, and this is not the first time, I know you've heard that. The second one was really about challenging our own perceptions of ourself. You know, are we proud of ourself? Are we proud of our community? What do we think of ourselves? And I thought that's an interesting one, because only a few communities actually admit that to themselves, because we're always hardest on ourselves and our community. This isn't right. Why don't we do it this way? How come that city does it that way? So they were saying, how about we challenge ourselves? So that was a good thing. The other was about revitalizing our own economic future. How do we create economic vitality in all areas? How does that happen? You know, so they were questioning, how does this happen? And that, that's an interesting question. And then the preparing for the future. You know, and very high on the list was protecting the working waterfront, what to do with the power plant, and of course, the wastewater treatment plant. So in the plan, in chapter two of the plan, which is page 15, I'm going to move that to, we've come up with three initiatives. Now, we try to always limit the initiatives in an economic development plan. An economic development plan is usually good for three to five years, you know, because the economy changes, things change. We'll tell you at the end, we'd like you to see this be a living document. Your economic development plan should be a living document. It needs to change. Often, there will be things that you do as a council that will change the ability for it. There will be economic changes that happen. There'll be a new development that comes in that can change it. So you need to think of this not as static, but as a living document, as a guide to move forward. So the three initiatives that we have is, one is maintain and enhance Morro Bay's character itself. Again, this gets back to the sense of place. You know, how do you continue to promote this as a unique place? Number two is create those vibrant economic centers that we talked about, the four economic centers. And three, marketing those catalyst sites. Market those sites so that they can create that economic activity that you're looking for and that economic impact. Forward, yeah. Forward.
Forward.
So initiative number one, in the maintaining and enhancing Morro Bay's character, I'm sure you've heard some of this already in some of the other plans that you're doing, is, you know, how do we create more physical appeal, more curb appeal, physical environment, streetways, gateways? And we're going to talk about gateways to that. So there's been a lot of discussion about signage and wayfinding, but one of the things that we see out there is actually your gateways to the town. You have four main gateways, and we're going to talk a little further about that. And we want to talk about secondary gateways. Can you go to the next one? Did you break it?
And there is a, there is a third gateway. This is the gateway to the north coast.
There you go.
Morro Bay is.
Morro Bay. There, there you go. Yeah. There you go. So we call the gateways as, gateways to the city, we list them as primary and secondary. Now, the primary ones are those that enter the city off of a major thoroughfare. So either off of 41 or 1 coming into the city. And this map kind of highlights those. So you have one up north, on North Main, at Urbuena and Highway 1. The major one, of course, is at Highway 41, and then Highway 1 in North Main, and Highway 1 at Morro Bay. Now, these are opportunities to really invite people into the city. And you can drive around, and you can see for yourself what you have there as compared to other communities. These are primary areas that you have traffic going by, of which you want to pull traffic off. And these are the introduction to the city. And most of them, you have only one that has any type of landscaping, signage, gateway that really promotes you. So we think that you're missing opportunity here. And when you start to talk about your wayfinding, that you include this discussion in that discussion too, because it is part of it. Because it is the entrance to your city. Secondary ones, I don't know if we have that, secondary ones. So you'll see those little yellow lines are secondary gateways. Again, part of the economic centers are gateways into the community. They're bringing people, people are entering your city to purchase goods and services that stimulate economic activity, and they're not branded. You know, so you want them to start feeling, like when you've entered into this area, this is a unique area. You know, I mean, your most unique probably areas, people know, is probably the Embarcadero, because they're coming here maybe to go to the Rock or something like that. But each one of them, and we're going to go through each one of them, is unique in its own way, and it creates economic activity. And what we're trying to do is create more activity, so you need to make, you need to really promote these. It's like any other business, you're promoting those centers for your community. Initiative two, which is page 27, as you go through here. Are there any questions so far?
Audrey, I do have a question. In terms of looking at these, these steps you're talking about, and maybe you're going to mention it later on, but what's, in terms of implementing this plan and revisiting it periodically, monthly, six months, and with what groups would you do that?
Yeah. We're going to do a section at the end, which is, chapter three is the implementation. So we'll get there. Yeah. So initiative number two, we've got three initiatives. Initiative number two has the four economic centers in it. So this is really talking about the economic centers and what's happening here. And again, because you're a built-out community, means you have to work with what you have. So how do we create, within these economic centers that you already have, how do you create more activity? You know, one may be physical improvements and trying to attract people. Other is actually working with businesses that are within those centers. And the purpose of actually looking at them as centers that are unique to one another is to, one, market them that way, but two is, they have different things that are going on in them. They're serving different customers often to those areas, and it is also easier to work with. When you have a big plan and we're going to do everything, it's a little harder if you break it down, because again, this is going to have to be a collaboration with the private sector. In each of those centers, those businesses and property owners that are in those centers will need to be engaged and want to participate. You know, that is where some of this implementation is going to be coming along, is, are they going to want to do that? You know, and we don't know that. This is a recommendation. So the way the plan is laid out is each center has its own mini-plan, so that you could go to those centers and talk to those businesses, those property as owners, and say, what if we did some marketing here? We did some branding here? What if we could work with you? What if we looked at your vacant buildings here? What if we looked at infill development here? In your center, what would that look like? And if that possibly could increase your business by 5%, would it be worth doing that? So it's kind of a different way of thinking. This is not a traditional economic development plan. A traditional economic development plan goes out and says, we're going to bring these businesses in. Your problem is, if you brought them in, where would you put them? So now you're working the other way. You're saying, okay, we have these existing businesses, we may have some vacant space, we may have some vacant buildings. How do we fill those? Get them ready? You know, I mean, we're seeing some vacant space that was vacant when we were here before. That's a property owner issue. Otherwise, it would be rented. You know, so you're always going to have those challenges through that process. So what we're going to do is basically go through each of the economic centers and give you what we saw and how these areas could be addressed. So the first one is North Main, and Fawn and I are going to do this together. I'm going to take North Main, and then Fawn's going to take the other centers.
To do that?
North Main is very long and linear, so that's probably a challenge in itself. But it's mainly a mix of residential and commercial use, primarily serves the North Main area, your residents up in that area, and visitors, and a seasonal thing. And the perception survey itself, it got a poor fare rating from people, that it could look better. There are a number of, there was vacant facilities here when we were here before, vacant buildings could be, and there were some vacant spaces that were there. And there's, we have plenty of pictures on this one, because it is so long. So, on this one, you have, you know, the gateway that's coming off of Highway 1 that terminates at the bike area there. So this is kind of one of those areas. And there's a number of things that show on here where you could have different things that could happen, you know, renovation, how do we clean it up? How do we make it look a little bit nicer? When you get further up, if you can go to the next one. Around Spencer's, here's where you can take a look at business assistance, where, this is where you bring economic development organizations and business service providers together to work with businesses such as at this center. This is an underutilized center. Okay? Lots of vacant space, big parking lot, big parking lot. But Spencer's is an icon here. What else, if the owner of the property wanted to, could be located there? What else could go on? It's already a destination for the residents there, that they go there, they use it as a gathering spot. Taco Temple is like fantastic, right? But there's no marketing going on. It could easily expand. It has a great view, but it has parking in front of it, so you don't see the view when you're sitting inside. Some of these types of things that could change how they are doing business could improve their business, and this is what we're doing. So this is truly economic development at the ground level, is working with the business and saying, this is how you could increase your sales, by, you know, expanding, attracting, you know. We never saw a billboard ever coming into town that, gee, you should go to Taco Temple, you know, that this should be a place. And they're right there on Highway 1. Not hard to get to, easy, on and off of the freeway, you know, to get there. So this is a nice little center that could have more activity. Yes?
You are aware that every Thursday, there is a farmer's market in that area?
Yes. Yeah. And it gets a lot of people.
It does, yes.
Yeah, and I'm sure it gets...
I just didn't see a mention of it in the report, but I think it's important, because that really is something that the locals use a lot, and it's important, yeah.
Yeah, it's very successful and very full, yeah. And it's a gorgeous area, but, you know, you have all that traffic going by, is how could you get more of the traffic to come off the road? And one of the things that we noticed, and having a landscape architect with us, he noticed it right away, was fencing along the freeway. You know, it's sad, it's very rusted, it's sad. I know that the, you don't want to put a...
It's not the newly mentioned...
Yeah, probably not new mentioned, you know, but how do you change that? And how do you put something on it that makes it look more attractive? Yeah, so...
I have to ask if that's in the Highway Caltrans right away?
That's where I was just going. So, that's one of the challenges that we all need to learn to work through, is that fence is a Caltrans fence. That's why Mr. Davis was chuckling as our former Caltrans rep. So, working through that, I mean, we all go by that every day and think, "Oh, you know, wouldn't it be great if?" But that's a challenge to work through.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, I mean, it's something that, again, you have to plan for, you have to work with, you have to work with Caltrans, and, but those are things that you have to look, and they're very long-term. You know, because you don't have the money to go out and replace a fence, and you have to work with Caltrans and things like that. So, is there another one? There? Here's again Spencer's, just looking at the infill sites that are there. So, there's opportunity. The nice thing over in North Main is that it does serve the residents that's in that area. So, understanding that, this is a good location. There were a couple of buildings that we saw that could be, you know, nice little tech operations, you know, they were two-floor. It's kind of thinking outside of the box, and that's what you're going to have to do, because you don't have somewhere you can put an industrial park or a business park or something. You have to look at everything piece by piece and say, "Okay, what could go here? And can we, can we work with the property owner to do that?" And the other is, can we work with the businesses to help those businesses actually expand? So, it's incremental through that process. So, again, with each of the centers, we're recommending that you brand them, you know, some signage so that people understand it, the wayfinding, so that you can go to these unique businesses that you do have in these areas, and that you are in North Main. You know, this is this area, or whatever you want to call it, you know, for the districts there. And then working with existing, repurposing buildings. The next economic center, I'm going to turn this over to Fawn for, is Quintana.
I was chair of the planning commission, so I totally understand the microphone thing. Quintana is also a linear economic center, and it is composed primarily of service and commercial businesses. But when we first looked at Quintana, we tried to talk about it as Quintana from one end of Quintana to the other, but then realized that that was really hard, because you've really got three distinct districts. And those are Quintana at Main Street, which is primarily retail with a mix of service that includes like The Good Flea, Lemos Feat and Pet Supply, Joe's Surfboard Shop, and some, also some service businesses like Culligan Water and Tire and Auto Shops. Then, moving south, you've got Quintana at Kennedy Way, which are shopping centers, the two primary, I mean, on both sides of Kennedy Avenue, with Albertson's and Rite Aid as the anchors. But you also have restaurants and some residential in this area, as well as some service businesses like U-Haul and Automotive. Then, on the far south, you have Quintana at La Loma, which that whole stretch is more, predominantly more service commercial, a lot of automotive, boat kind of things. And Moro Bay Boulevard is Quintana's primary gateway, which is good for Quintana, because Moro Bay Boulevard's got a nice roundabout and a nice monument. It doesn't say you're entering Quintana if you take a right or a left, but still, it's a nice, it's a nice entrance into the, it tells you you're off the freeway and you're in town now. Quintana's secondary gateways are at La Loma Avenue on the south and then Main Street on the north. Much like Audrey talked with on, about North Main, is Quintana could benefit from some additional landscaping and wayfinding and branding at these, branding at these gateways, an additional, you know, signage that lets, gives you an idea about what you might find within these Quintana districts. Business opportunities in Quintana should really focus on two things. One is, which is not a big surprise, filling gaps in retail and service businesses to really help reduce leakage, and that's especially in the retail area, and to better serve and provide, you know, more products and services that Moro Bay residents and visitors are looking for. And also, the creative reuse of some of these existing buildings that are vacant. There are several lots that are under, that are, you know, empty or certainly underutilized, and that could support more economic growth, and especially maybe entrepreneurial growth and some small business, um, kind of clustering business growth, which we'll talk about in a minute. And Quintana is really important to the city. It's an important retail and service area for the city. Its 56 businesses generate about 20% of the city's retail sales, so it's just behind the Embarcadero. It's important because it does serve both locals and visitors, I'm sure, find their way to Albertson's and to the Auto Zone. And it's also important because of its working characteristics. I mean, it's here in Quintana where, you know, tires are changed, lube jobs are obtained, there's probably some, you know, fabrication and some light manufacturing going on. And these are not only important for residents, but they're also for business-to-business services. I mean, every community needs a Quintana. What makes your Quintana different or unique is that you've got this retail shopping center sandwiched between these two service areas. So, from that standpoint, a lot of communities' Quintanas, you don't really care what they look like. But from this standpoint for Moro Bay, you've got to go through those two areas, so image counts. I mean, even going to the shopping center, you're going to have to go through the service, the working characteristic part of Quintana. The other aspect of Quintana, because of its sort of nuts and bolts and, you know, the working nature of Quintana, it's really the perfect place to accommodate creative, like an industrial arts center, or a makerspace, or, you know, accommodation for entrepreneurial businesses. I mean, example we gave was just looking at, um, not saying that it's not a good business, but The Good Flea, that's a pretty big building right there. They've got another building next to it, which I'm not sure what's in there, but this parking fenced-in area in between. But imagine if those facilities were aggregated to create more of a complex, where a makerspace, industrial arts complex, and we provide several examples in the report, something, if you think along those lines, that would be the perfect place to do that, because things can be welded, machinery can be repaired, you know, creative ideas could be, you know, could take place in a place like that. We are going to, the other thing Quintana has is that what we call a watch site. And a watch site is a piece of property or land that is not currently on the market, it's not for sale. But it's the kind of opportunity that, I'm referring to the former Moro Bay Elementary School. It's the kind of thing, if it ever, you know, if the school district ever said, "Hey, we're going to sell it," that you wouldn't want to find out that a bank bought it. You know, nothing against banks, but if there was an opportunity to influence what went on in that particular site, because it's a campus. And a perfect opportunity for a professional tech company, something along those lines that, that is, that's the only spot you have really for something like that in Moro Bay. So, we're suggesting that you keep it on the radar, because should it become available, it's something I think that would be, if you could influence what went on in that, in that former elementary school, could certainly be a huge asset for Moro Bay. Any questions about? Okay, so we're going to move on to the Embarcadero. And to me, the Embarcadero is really the, it's like the face of Moro Bay for both visitors and locals, because it contains the key identifiers that define the city, which when everyone we talk to, or the rock, the beach, the boats, the stacks, the harbor, nature, shopping, eating, recreating, relaxing, it's, when you think of Moro Bay, you think of those things. And for this reason, we're recommending that Embarcadero, Embarcadero be really rebranded and just be called, call it the waterfront. Because I think right now, it's sort of Embarcadero and kind of working waterfront. But if you were to rebrand it as waterfront, I think in most people's mind, that really typifies what they think of when they think of the Embarcadero. And that you have two, two sub-brands or sub-districts, and that would be, the Embarcadero would be part of the waterfront, as would be the working waterfront, which is like the Measure D, the Beach Street North, that really describes sort of that whole commercial fishing, recreational fishing area. The Embarcadero is really important because it's, again, it's a significant economic engine for the city, and this is no surprise to you guys. It's a revenue generator for sales tax, for TOT. Its 90 businesses generate 26% of the city's sales tax revenue, so it's like the highest producer. It's the location for jobs, and as Audrey mentioned, it's for one of your exporting industry, which is commercial fishing. It's one of those companies that export products out and bring new money into the community, so it expands the pie. As you know, it's the face of the community. Again, image counts about what it looks like. Fortunately, in this perception survey, it did get the highest rating of all of the economic centers in the, in the community for how it looks. I think that, excuse me, Moro Bay residents and people we talked to really want the Embarcadero to succeed. But for them, success means not losing that connection to commercial fishing, to the harbor, to Moro Rock, and the marine environment. And if anything, what we heard was that they're really wanting greater access to these unique resources. So, it's a great place, but what they want is they want more of it. They want continuous sidewalks, they want streetscape improvements, more places to sit, more places to sit in the shade, greater access to the waterfront and to the beaches. And again, wayfinding and informational signage would certainly be helpful for that. The Embarcadero is really unique in that its gateway, its primary gateway is pedestrian. You know, you go down Moro Bay Boulevard and you end up at the Centennial Parkway, but if you're in a car, you can't get there from there. So, it's interesting, and yet it's also problematic. Because when you get there, there's no signage that says, "Oh, you can't get there from here. Take a right and go to Harbor, or take a left and go to Pacific." Or, I mean, it's like, it's enticing. You see the rock, you can kind of look down there, but it's like, wow, how do I get there? How do I get there from here? And what am I going to find when I get down there? And if I drive down there, am I going to be able to park? Because I don't really know. I don't know any of these answers. So, you're really leaving it up to people to find their own way. Some people, honestly, they give up before they find their own way. So, there needs to be some, a lot of attention, especially to that gateway. We know that, you know, the importance of the Embarcadero simply because of all of the work that you're currently putting into studying that area. The Centennial Parkway, the Embarcadero, the Embarcadero Promenade, the downtown waterfront strategic plan, all good, you know, all good and excellent concentrated efforts to really get a handle on what could happen in the Embarcadero area, because you've got great destinations down there. The Moro Rock, you've got the working waterfront, you have all of the restaurants, everything that's going along the Embarcadero alignment. And the, in the waterfront, downtown waterfront strategic plan, it provides a lot of great ideas about potentials that could happen in the waterfront Embarcadero area, which certainly, I think, we all, the list was basically the same for us as well. Lastly, if the Embarcadero didn't have enough going for it, it's also the location for the three catalyst sites for the city. So, there are three catalyst sites that we call because they are large. Compared to what, when Audrey, in the introduction, Moro Bay's got limited land and buildings. You have limited, its growth within these, within these economic centers are going to be hard-fought and incremental, and they're, but potential for a lot of success. These other catalyst sites are large and will take some time and further study, but potentially could be kind of game changers for Moro Bay. That includes the power plant, the 100-acre power plant, which is privately owned. So, you know, the city's got certainly some regulatory, you know, weigh-in on that. The wastewater treatment plant, which is co-owned by the city and Cayucus, is a potential, the city has a lot of discretion over potentially what could happen at that 26-acre site. And then, the Market Plaza site, which is, the city does have some city-owned assets at that particular location, as well as parking lots and buildings, and a lot of private involvement with that project. That catalyst site is a shared catalyst site with the downtown, but certainly has a lot of, as I say, could really be a game changer for the city. And we're going to talk a little bit about more of those later.
So, what is the Atascadero?
Oh, Atascadero, sorry. I totally forgot Atascadero. So, the, no, the Atascadero site is, it's right next, well, it's on Atascadero, right next to the wastewater treatment plant. And I believe there's some city-owned facilities there. There is an old cement batch plant. Used to be a bowling alley?
Some people refer to the wastewater treatment plant, 26 acres, as the Atascadero Road site. So, it's really interchangeable for all of that, what's brown on the, on the thing there. There is a little bit of redevelopment opportunity that's going on at Atascadero Road, 41 in Maine, on the east side of Maine. But if we're referring to the Atascadero Road site, it's that whole general area of which 26 acres is city-owned, city-owned and shared with Cayucus, 11 of them. And then, there's a four-acre piece in the northeast that is the cement plant...
That's what the part we're talking about.
That's what you referred to.
Yes, the four-acre part.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, and then lastly, is the downtown, is certainly an important economic center for the, for the city. And I consider it sort of like, I guess I just have to like compare it to body parts, but really kind of the heart or the soul of Moro Bay. And it's also the gateway to the Embarcadero. You pretty much have to, you know, get to, go through downtown to get to the Embarcadero. And for that reason, that whole connection between the downtown and the Embarcadero is really, success really hinges on how strong that connection is. The downtown has a lot of the city's restaurants, banking, real estate, a lot of that fire stuff, finance, insurance, real estate, majority of the city's motels and hotels, and a lot of secondhand and thrift stores. Its 88 businesses generate about 7% of the city's sales tax. So, a lot of business, a little bit less contribution in terms of sales tax. The downtown got a fair rating on the community perception on the survey of how it looks. There was a lot of comments about need to, some streetscape improvements and building facade activity, and a lot of comments for, about need to change the retail diversity and the mix of stores. The other comment that was really stuck with us is that, you know, people call it like quirky and funky, and they like it that way. And that it's very independent. The primary gateway for the downtown is Moro Bay Boulevard and, I'm sorry, Moro Bay Boulevard. And one of the things that when we were talking with stakeholders was, especially local people, they were commenting about that there wasn't a lot for... it's, they were commenting about that, that there wasn't a lot for them downtown in terms of opportunities, like goods and services that they want to procure. Which struck with us is that Roger Brooks, who I think may have visited Morro Bay, not too recent past, is that visitors go where locals go. And if that's somewhere other than the downtown, that's where they're going to go as well. So it's important for economic viability in the downtown that it provides goods and services that are of interest, not just to visitors in town, but to locals as well. So business opportunities in the downtown should really focus on diversifying the retail mix, and that is the type and the price and the quality of goods that you can find downtown. The second thing is enhancing the experience, making the downtown more of a destination. And then the third would be really working towards that continuous connection between the, the downtown and the Embarcadero, and that's really along Morro Bay Boulevard, is filling empty buildings, creating more retail, so there's one continuous experience from one end to the other. And those recommendations are based upon, there's really not enough retail diversity in the downtown to attract a wide range of shoppers, not just locally, but also visitors as well. It's only capturing a segment of that, of the potential market, I think, that, that it could get. The downtown is a destination, lot of comments, especially in the perception survey, and even validated, I think, a lot of these, everything that's in here is also in the downtown waterfront strategic plan. So they came up with the same, basically, kind of the same list of recommendations, is that people do want to eat on the sidewalk, they do want to have outdoor eating, they do want to have more opportunity for entertainment and interesting venues, and spending more time outside, whether they're just walking and having comfortable places to sit in the shade. And the last, as I say, having a continuous experience, making it, making it easy for waterfront people to explore the downtown, and for downtown people to explore the, to explore the waterfront. That's really key to both of those centers.
Fun. Can I?
Yes.
Make an observation, I think, and have you commented on it. So I think you said that the 80-ish businesses in the downtown produce 7% of the sales tax.
Yes.
And on the Embarcadero, was, I think it was roughly the same number of businesses, was it 23 or 33?
26.
26. So roughly 30%, maybe 33% of all the sales tax is generated in the downtown and the Embarcadero, which the next question you might want to ask is, where's the rest of it being generated? And the unique thing about our sales tax picture is the largest sales tax producers are gas stations and, and grocery stores. So, so we are, that's why those numbers appear challenged, because, and, and those, those gas stations don't sit squarely in, really, in any of the economic centers.
Right. I, I also have a question, yeah. I think, you know, we've realized all along that that's what's needed in the downtown area, is a much better mix of retail stores and restaurants and whatever. So the question for me is, how do you get those businesses in there? How do you find the people and interest them in those buildings? And actually, given what we currently have, what's the strategy for doing that?
Well, I think we're going to get to that.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Yes. Right, so the opportunity sites are, one, the city-owned Distaccio Building, which I just read in the newspaper, the restaurant's moving. So that might be something that's more likely to happen. And I know that this whole site is kind of wrapped into the whole Market Plaza, potentially as well. And then, which also includes a parking lot down below, so there's city-owned assets there. And then, as I mentioned before, the former elementary school, because this is really kind of a shared, this one, this site is shared with Quintana, too, because of its location. Yes? Take it away.
Take it away. Make sure I speak into it. So initiative number three. So initiative number two, you have, you'll have the four economic centers, again, you know, standalone activity that can happen in those centers to help generate activity with those, and mainly working with the existing businesses, and with any opportunities that come up with either infill, or what we call these opportunity sites, or watch sites. So in initiative three, it's really about looking at these catalyst sites. And we look at the catalyst sites as that you have three. You know, you have the power plant, you have the wastewater treatment area, and down on what we're calling the, the Market Plaza, in, in those areas. Those areas are larger, again, they can make significant economic impact if they're to move forward. They're much more complex, they're long-term in nature, and so there's a lot more work that has to go on with them. And they are going to be public-private collaboration. I mean, I don't think you should question that anymore. You know, because nobody is going to come in, a developer is not going to come in and just do a project on their own. They're going to ask for some type of collaboration with a city. That collaboration will probably be around infrastructure, mainly. So what the city needs to do is to make sure that you understand what resources might be out there, because you're not going to have the resources to put in new infrastructure or do that. But what, what are the things that you can do? So in Market Plaza, how can you help to assemble properties? And you have properties, you know, around that area, so you have the ability to bring assemblage together to get the right, you know, type of development there. And this, in the Market Plaza, is the area where we heard a lot about, could we have a higher-end motel? Could we have a conference center? This is the perfect place for it. And the views are perfect, that is just set. It's really now about finding a owner of property, or a developer that is willing to invest in that, in a collaboration with the city to see that venture. So all of these properties, which have the ability to have significant impact, will take probably a developer, a well-financed developer, to move forward. So you, you have a narrow market that you're looking for, and how do you prepare for that? How do you market these? Because there's, there's not all that many developers out there that do this type of large development that's out there, and work with cities, but there are few. So, so you're not marketing it to the world, you're preparing packages that you take to certain people to start promoting it. But what you need to know is, you know, for some of them, you have part ownership, or you can influence it, or one of them, it's privately held, and you can only wait for them. You know, you, you can only push them so far. But what the city needs to do is understand, okay, what tools will I have available? So we had redevelopment go away, we now have the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, EFIDs, that, that are available to you. But you have to know what are the ins and outs, you know, is it going to be feasible to do that? So again, it's going to be about, when you think about these type of catalyst projects moving forward, are you prepared? Is the city prepared to figure out how to do them? Because you want to be prepared before the developer comes, so that you know what all of your opportunities are. So in, in the strategy here, we kind of talk about several different things where you can market them, you know, taking a look at them and seeing what's, what's the viability for them, how do you put that package together? The developers that you can talk to, which I know the city has been doing that, you've done a great job in doing that, you're going one by one to find out if there's interest. And you're also telling the Morro Bay story. Part of this is, is getting back to saying, okay, you're a good partner in moving this forward. And that's what a developer is going to be looking for, is that good partnership in moving that forward. Do you have a couple of them up there? So these are just kind of the, the three areas to look at. So again, for these catalyst sites, you want to continuously market these to developers. They're, you know, I would put these on what we call op sites. It's a website that really takes city, you know, just strategic sites, and markets those to developers and potential companies that want to market in it. It's a, it's a niche marketing type of thing. There's also a conference called 3P. It's, uh, public-private partnerships that have started up across the nation, where cities are going and talking with developers of what their opportunities are in their cities. Now, the unique opportunity here is that, how many places on the coast of California can you do a development? You know, and that, that's something that's unique here, to do that. So, you know, there are opportunities of, of how to find these people and actually market to them. But you want to make sure that you're prepared, because they're going to ask you a lot of questions about, okay, how will you help us make this go forward? You know, and what hurdles are we going to have? What's the environmental on the piece of property? So just having that ready is good. So the implementation. So the third chapter here, on page 84, is all about implementation. And as we've said through this, this, you need to be doing this as a public-private partnership, a collaboration. In most cities, in, with economic development, it is done through the participation of local businesses or a business organization through that process. So we are recommending, and we're not saying that the Chamber of Commerce or the merchants' agreement, we're not committing for them, you know, but what we would suggest to you is that you do a partnership with them to implement these three initiatives. With a business organization, really taking the leadership role in initiative one and two. Now, with the city's support. But business organizations are really about convening the businesses to discuss these things and moving it forward. And that's what you need, is some convening, particularly around the economic centers, of discussion of what these plans are. So if they look at this plan and they go, well, yeah, that makes sense, you know, maybe if we could, you know, increase the activity here, this would be good for my business, and I'm willing to do this, I might participate, I might even be a champion to do this for my own economic center in that place. So it makes sense to do a partnership with a business organization in trying to spread two paths of implementation, you know, moving forward with the implementation. We have put it in this chapter in itself so that it could be implemented, so you can just take the chapter out and you can look forward to implementation. We suggest the implementation be, again, around each one of these initiatives. And initiative one, again, was about kind of the gateways and the branding. So that ties back with the other things that you have going on about the wayfinding, all of that should be done. Now, the city has a big role in that, but you also want to be listening to the businesses in the area, particularly when we start talking about branding of an economic center. They have, the businesses have to be agreeing that, yes, this is what I want to do. So you want them to be a part of that. We're recommending that initiative three be led by the city. So the city really kind of leads that. That way, you're moving all of these things forward, but with different leadership through, through the process. And I'm going to go kind of through each one of these activities that we would see it happen. So for initiative one, and two, again, we would suggest that the Chamber of Commerce and the Merchants Association, if they're willing, would take the leadership and, and help to bring that together. Support team would be the city itself, and what we're calling a tech team, a technical assistance committee, that would come together. And that's really the organizations around you that provide business assistance services. So you have the Community College, you have workforce development, you probably have the Small Business Development Center. How can they come together and take a look at your plan? And what can they bring to the table? Now, those organizations often, you know, you call upon them, and they work singly with businesses. So this is more about bringing them together and having them be a piece of the action, and moving things forward. So engaging them and inviting them in, because they are typically response-oriented to the calls they're getting. So, and they, they have their own regulations, they have their own funding that they have to move forward. But if we have a plan that we can share with them and ask them to be engaged in the plan, and how can they bring? This has been a successful model used in other areas. So we just call it the tech plan. And they can work directly with businesses when a business is identified that needs some assistance to do that. So the actions here are, one, kind of have an organization around, one, a tech team, bringing a tech team together and asking them, you know, this is our plan, this is what we'd like to move forward. And then, two, creating working groups of the centers. Again, convening meetings with the economic centers, presenting, you know what, we have this plan on Quintana. What do you think about it? You know, would you like to be involved? Would you like to see these things move forward? What do you think about having a maker space? What if we worked with the high school and the industrial arts program and, and created a maker space that could be used by entrepreneurs? Would that be of something, is this something that we can work together? And that could stimulate that activity. So that, one would be just kind of convening and finding out what your stakeholders in those business centers would like to do. Then moving that forward is really then working on the economic centers for them to start looking at their center itself and saying, you know what, here is a business that would be very compatible with me, that could go into that vacant building, if you could help us do that. So that they're engaged in that process to look at it, and it will be much more effective than trying to just market that building on its own, you know, to do that process. Second is to look at the brand, again, coming back to the brand, you know, this is about your wayfinding. I know that you have some things moving forward, we're really glad to hear that. And we were recommending, too, of working with somebody over at Cal Poly, to have some interns help you with your wayfinding, but bring all of those pieces together so that you have a wayfinding plan. It's mentioned in probably every plan that you have, you know, wayfinding and signage, and now we're just adding primary gateways and secondary gateways, and really consider branding those economic centers, and discussion about that. Third is the business assistance, working with businesses as they're identified. And we're suggesting that, you know, again, if the Chamber and the Merchants Association will want to do it, is actually doing a business outreach. Now, this is done in lots of communities, is doing a business outreach. Some of them are more formal than others, we would suggest here that it not be very formal, that you take it one by one, we call it block by block. And maybe once a month, you have a team of people, including council members, and you go visit companies. And you, you choose a block, say we choose a block in downtown, and we go visit them. And you spend an hour visiting them. And we have lots of examples in here of communities that have done that. And a lot of it is finding out, you know, what the business is doing. Part of it is introducing this plan, you know, this is what we're doing, and we're really here to help you increase business in your business. We want you to have a 10% increase, you know, how can we help you? Where, where are the areas? So it's really just about building the relationship with the businesses. And there, there's plenty of examples of, of this that are going on. They're not complex, they're just really simple, and they're just the outreach of building that relationship with them. And new business development. I find that chambers of commerce, which is what I'm mostly used to, is Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a board member of Chamber of Commerce, is working with the existing businesses and looking at infill development, whether it be an empty building or a thing, is the best ideas come from the businesses that are there. And this is what you were asking about, how do we find those businesses? The, the other idea is, you talk to your UPS guy. He knows everything. He knows every business that's growing, because he knows the activity of it, you know, by what they're receiving, and he knows the activity of other things. For downtowns and probably your Embarcadero, when you're talking about infill development and businesses for those, I, I know that you would love to have tech businesses, and if you had the right space for small software companies, entrepreneur-type companies, you definitely want to market to them. But it has to be the right space, and they have to have, for sure, the broadband, you know? And you've, you've had experience with, with a company here, because when they grow, how do, how do they continue to grow? Because they're going to grow. There's a lot for downtown about working with the downtown people on online commerce, you know? I mean, we're all moving to- to grow? Because they're going to grow. There's a lot for downtown about working with the downtown people on online commerce. You know, I mean, we're all moving to e-commerce. This is a scary thing for cities, but we're moving to the online and just ordering online. So how do we, how do we have back office e-commerce going on in these businesses that you have in the downtown? And that's why downtowns, you hear what Fawn was saying about they want more restaurants, they want more entertainment. That's where downtowns are going now because you can get anything that you want online and it's going to be delivered right to my house. So we have that mix that's going on. And this is why your economic development plan has to be a living document because that change is happening now, you know. So you're fortunate that you have visitors coming in that help sustain that retail because you have your visitors coming in. There's also, we recommend in here of taking a look at a Google Map, you know, of helping your businesses get on Google Map to really help the businesses promote themselves outside of the area, you know. So because you only have infill development in empty buildings, you know, how do you change that mix in the downtown, I think you're asking is, you have to wait almost to you have these buildings and take a look at the building and say, okay, this is, this is the type of mix I need in here. And there's lots of information in both, I think, all of your plans about the type of mix. And we have found that in downtowns, it's looking at the next downtown and who is successful in that downtown because they're ready to expand into another downtown because they're used to it. Because not all small businesses are used to working in a downtown. So they have a unique aspect. When you're out at North Main looking for businesses, it's the businesses that provide goods and services to the residents that are there. So they're going to want entertainment, they're going to want some food, they're going to want groceries, they're going to want cleaners, they're going to want all the things that I don't have to go someplace else. One of your challenges is, you know, particularly around retail, is that you are so close to other cities of which they're commuting to jobs, is that they're always going to be doing, you're always going to have sales leakage to the other cities, you know, because they're commuting there. So they're probably stopping at a big box and coming home, you know, and that's part of what you have, you know. So that's going to be a challenge to bring that back, to do that. For Initiative Three, the lead is the city. And again, this is really around the catalyst sites, but where the city performs the best in all of our experience is really taking the leadership role on catalyst projects, big projects, infrastructure, appearance and things like that. We would recommend here that the city appoint a city ombudsman, someone that everybody knows, every business knows, that's the point person, that's the person I go to who's going to help me. And that doesn't matter if it's with a small permit or a large permit, that that's my person, that's who I go to and they're going to work with me to make sure that I get taken care of, you know, because it has to be creative solutions sometimes in small cities. You know, it's not, everything's not black and white. We'd like it to be black and white, but it's not. There's a lot of gray. And so how do you figure out how to make things work? You have some older buildings that, you know, don't fit all the codes, you know, there's things that people want to do, they have creative ideas and they bring you creative ideas. How do we work with them to figure out how we can do this? And that's what a city ombudsman does for you, is really work through that and is that personal relationship builder with the businesses. Do you have a question?
No.
John?
Yeah. The other is the existing projects. Now, the existing projects is really important for those big investors that we're looking for. When we go back to the catalyst projects where we're looking for developers, they're going to be looking at your existing projects. What have you done with them? Did you get them done? You know, how long have they been on the books? How long have you been working on them? How come they didn't get done? You know, whatever. So it's really important to continue those projects. And you guys have a lot of projects, which is a good thing. I mean, it's very admirable, the projects that you have going on and what you're doing to improve your city. So that's, so you want to make sure that they keep moving because you will be ranked on that when somebody's looking at. That's an evaluation factor when a developer is looking at putting an investment in. Third is probably physical improvements, and you're the only ones who really have control of that, the physical infrastructure, you know, itself. So a lot of the landscaping, the street improvements that you need, any type of physical improvement. And then the catalyst sites, you know, again, I think the city's in the position to be marketing those sites and promoting those sites to investors because you're asking for an investor to come in and put a lot of money into your community to stimulate the economy to do that. Oh, yes, the Economic Vitality Corporation can be a partner in that, yeah, to do that. Just some closing notes here, and we've said this before, is that we want you to treat your economic development plan as a living document. And I think you asked, how often do you update this? Typically, an economic development plan is good for about three years, but if you have a lot of activity that's going on, you probably want to do it in two years, you know. But as you're moving through it, you want to communicate with the stakeholders in your community, particularly the businesses, what you're doing and what you have accomplished. You know, have you moved things forward to do that? So you want to, you know, figure out a timeline, you know. And we would suggest that, you know, when we're done and you guys are ready to start, that you have a 30, 60, 90-day kind of plan to launch it, whether that's meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and the Merchants' Association to see if they will be willing to take a leadership role, whatever it is. But you need to get it started. Expectations, you know, there's no silver bullet in economic development, ever, you know, in any community. It just doesn't happen. It looks like it does, but it doesn't. They all take a long time, you know, so you don't want to build up your expectations because for you guys, it's going to be incremental. It's going to be small, it's going to be incremental until really one of those catalyst projects. I think that if you were to get change in the downtown, the catalyst project in your downtown, you would start to see significant change because it would change over because something new has really been brought in that changes the dynamics of, one, your visitors and, two, what's happening around it, you know. And so catalyst projects have that effect, you know, but without that, it'll be incremental changes that you're really working with those existing businesses to help them with that. The focus, again, is that short-term incremental, you know, with this plan. You know, in two years, you're going to look at it and say, well, we don't have to do that anymore, or we maintain that and we're really now, we're prepared to really go out and do our catalyst projects, you know. I mean, the power plant might be ready, you know, the owner is saying, yep, we're ready to go, it's time to go, and you're doing that. I would say the last thing for economic development, something both Fawn and I believe in, and we've seen it in many cities, you know, we've delivered a lot of economic development strategies. We've worked in over 350 communities. And we're always asked, well, how successful were they? Well, it depends on you. If you pick up the plan and you move it forward, you know, but the ones that have been successful were the ones where both the city and the businesses have a shared purpose philosophy about moving the community forward economically. You know, there may be things that we don't want it to change, but you can't ignore the economics of it, you know, because the economics of it is what supports the lifestyle. It supports the essential services of the city. So that shared purpose philosophy has to run through everybody. And it may take some time to do that. I know when we first started here, there was a little contention, you know, it wasn't as smooth, you know, I think that you bypassed that already, you know, and so, but if you don't have that, it will be harder to move this forward through that process. And we are ending before five, so we'll open it up to questions.
Great. Anybody want to start off for questions? Red, you want to start us off on questions at all?
No.
Okay. Matt?
In terms of, and I think you talked about in terms of the implementation, and so the shared responsibility, you're going from city staff, some city council involvement, and then the various economic stakeholders, be it the Chamber of Commerce or Merchants' Association. So those would be the beginning bodies of implementing, getting this rolling?
Yes.
And then I guess you just, and I think you mentioned developing some sort of shared, I guess the first thing you would do is get those bodies together and then establish that timeline. You said 90-day?
We recommend that you kind of lay out a 30, 60, 90-day, you know, these are the things we're going to do. Don't make it over aggressive, you know, but, you know, in 30 days, we would like to do this. We want to come up with an agreement that, yes, you know, maybe the Chamber of Merchants, yes, we're willing to take this on, or we're only willing to take this much on. We don't want to take everything on yet. We're not comfortable with it, but we'll take on one thing. You know, I mean, there's four things that are listed here. And what are we comfortable for? You know, business organizations are very good, at least, at convening businesses and bringing people together. So that's a great place to start, you know, to that process.
And I guess is this initial, right now, we have a T-bid, but we do not have a bid. Would this be kind of a preliminary step before setting up something like that?
I would suggest that you would do this before you set up a bid because, again, you have to have your businesses want to participate in that because they're assessing themselves.
Sure.
Yeah, so they would, they would like to see what their future is. There's, yeah, but it would give them more of a, yes, you're right. You give them more of a reason to participate because, gee, this is what we could accomplish, you know. Particularly with a bid, I see often in a bid, I also sit on my downtown board, and we're going through not a bid, but a P-bid. So we're going through a property based on top of a bid, which is even more complex, for the sole purposes of safety, you know. And so what is the purpose of the bid? Is it going to be to do street improvements? Is it to do landscaping? Is it to do branding? And it could be all of those, you know, to do that. So this will help them create that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. John?
Could you outline any experience you've had or seen with the success of an EIFD and what your viewpoint is of that vehicle?
Yes, well, as you know, it's new.
Yes.
Yes, so there's only probably three or four in the state right now. We actually work with, and I think we have recommended in the plan here Kaiser Marston, who puts infrastructure financing districts together. I have only seen them right now in the larger cities, not in the small cities. So as I understand it, and I'm not an expert in them, that they're best fit for projects that are at least over $3 million to do that. I think the one thing that we do have in the plan, too, that we didn't talk about, this is more internal to the city, is also looking at business cooperation tax. So like when you're building the wastewater treatment plant, that, so you're capturing some of that revenue back to the city. Doesn't have anything to do with the EFID, but those are two similar types of things. I think you would have to take a look at the test cases. There are two or three in Los Angeles right now. There's one going on in San Francisco. I think there's one, huh?
West Sacramento.
West Sacramento, which is a smaller community, not as small as this, but it's a smaller community to have those go. But so far, I think it looks promising, let me put it that way.
Just a second question then. Are you understanding that as a city, we're financially strapped, so to speak, obviously, are there other types of vehicles you've seen be successful in assisting some of these catalyst site developments and shared public-private partnerships work that at least assist a city to become more economically viable in the very beginning?
Yeah.
Like UUTs or, you know, somebody mentioned bids, but other things like that?
Yeah, yeah. You can use bids, assessment districts, Melrose, any of those EFIDs, you know. I think with the developments, you're mainly going to be working with the infrastructure side of it. You know, the challenge of using public money in California for the development of a project is that it triggers prevailing wage, which may not be a problem here, in some areas it is, to do that. Certainly be on the watch for anything in the new bills that are being passed, particularly SB One. I would be taking a look at to see what's in SB One, the new gas tax as it relates to roads. I'm, you know, I haven't read it yet, so I don't, can't tell you what's in it, but certainly there, there'll be different things that come out. And I know the staff has been, you know, they seem to be really good at looking at the different grants that, and opportunities that are out there through the strategic growth plan and other resources.
Now, last question is, for a major gateway into the city, such as you mentioned Highway 41 as an example, what are ideal, maybe might be ideal, not a what are the ideal, but what might be ideal types of businesses or developments that are appealing, given what you've seen for, let's just use that as a specific site of entry, just as an example? Do you have thoughts about that?
Probably, and I know that you, I believe you guys had Roger Brooks here, yeah, once, and he's probably, he's probably the-
About two years ago, yeah.
Yeah, he's probably the expert, you know, in that type of development. But what we have seen is, is really areas where you have travelers that are coming that they can pull off and they can stop, you know, and there's bathroom there. But what is really needed there is a monument that really states, I've arrived, you know. Yeah, it's screening and landscaping, you know, as you, you guys drive this all the time, I'm sure, and your drive-in is like, you know, do I want to stop here or do I want to keep driving, you know? So what is going to attract them to stop? So, I mean, there's a lot of examples of some monuments that can be in there. Certainly that one corner lends itself not to be, to be more inviting for somebody to pull in, stop, park-like type of area that you can use the bathrooms, understand where you are. There's a kiosk that says, okay, that's the way to the rock. I just saw it when I came down the hill. Okay, now how do I get to it? Yeah, for that type of thing.
Thank you.
Marla?
Yeah, you know, you've given us a lot of information here and a lot of ideas and thoughts for moving forward. If we could just, how would, what would be the first three things we should do to get moving? And that's one question. And the second one is, what would you consider the top priorities in this plan that we absolutely need to tackle first?
Well, the top priority, I would say, is the branding and the wayfinding. That would be our top priority. The first couple of things I think you need to do is really, if your business organization will take this on, is convening the businesses in each one of the centers. I think that's really, really important. The other is to convene the business organizations or the, I call them service providers. So that would be your workforce development, your SBDC, your Economic Vitality Corporation, bringing them together to understand what your plan is, okay? So that you're engaging them to be more active in your community with your businesses. You know, how can they be more active? Because the one thing that none of us ever know is, gee, there's an opportunity for a business to grow, you know, or there's an opportunity for a business to do more. You know, we were surprised, there was a number of companies that had online services going on. You have several of them that are here that have a storefront and the backend is online. Well, that's probably really good. Those are the types of companies you want to be talking to to see, how can I help them grow? You know, because if they created a job, you know, some portion of that is going to create an economic activity because you're going to have more spending dollars in the community to do that. And that is more done one-on-one, understanding the businesses, you know, and that, that's a challenge. You just, you don't walk up and say, okay, how can I help you? I'm from the government, how can I help you? So you need to understand that. And you have great service providers out there who have resources. One of the things that we talk about in the plan, so again, going back to your dominant economic sector, is hospitality. There's been some communities that have created, and we just wrote a plan for Lake Havasu. So we were brought in to do a plan for, for a competition. They were competing for America's Best Community. And this was a contest put on by Frontier Communications, so telecommunications, Dish Network and the Weather Channel. And the prize was $3 million. Network, and the Weather Channel. And the prize was $3 million for the community, top prize, listen. So 400 communities, you know, it was a three, three-step process, 400 communities. So Lake Havasu went for it. They got chosen as one of the top 30. Then they got chosen as one of the eight. And they just announced last week they were second, $2 million that they got, you know, which was very subtle. One of the things that they did, because of course, Lake Havasu, tourism, they, and tell me, they're tourism. They don't have anything else. That's it. It's only it. But one of the things that the businesses needed, when Vaughn and I were out talking to them, was that they needed to hire people for their businesses that had customer service skills. Every tourism community needs that. You used to have, I think at the community college, a customer service training program. You know, in other cities, that is done, you know, and workforce development, community colleges are trying to put people to work. You know, this is a great skills training. It's where you start, but you can, you can upgrade from that, because not everybody is going on to college. There are also college students who need jobs, but it doesn't mean every college student knows customer service. These are short trainings, but they get a certificate, and they grab, it's an easy program. It's, it's really an easy program, but it's, it's thinking outside of the box. It doesn't mean that, that company necessarily is going to grow, but if they have better customer service, who knows?
So the, the result is, is that I think the Hospitality Association in Lake Havasu, they developed one. They went, they got it, they developed one. And in talking with hoteliers here in town, said, wow, if we had, if I had somebody that had a hospitality certificate, I would, they, automatically, they'd get a dollar more an hour. So, you know, a lot of opportunity there. I would also say, in answer to Marla's question, too, is that as far as one of the top things, is, is letting the chamber, you know, this other partner know that you're serious and that you're, that you do assign an ombudsman, because if you, if you think about Initiative 1 and 2, it's really, it's, it's, the lead is in their ballpark, right? It's that, they're the ones that are going to have to demonstrate that the business community, and it could be that Quintana, you know, steps up, they've got their business and property owners saying, we love this, let's move. Well, it's important for the city to be there at those meetings and those working group meetings, that they are participating as those things move forward, because they're our roles for the city. It could be that, that's the only one this year, or it could be that all of them. I mean, you just don't know. And without that initiation and that leadership from the business community, it's, there's nothing you're going to do. Because it is private property, a lot of it's built out, and so it's really going to take their, taking the lead. But from the city's perspective, I think from the get-go, if you're invited, you need to be supportive of that and, and let them know that, yeah, we have somebody, we are going to be, you know, we're going to be looking at opportunities. The other, because one of the things that Audrey mentioned was this whole, when you look at development opportunities in Morro Bay, you don't have a piece of vacant land that you can build, a building from scratch. So a lot of this is going to be adaptive reuse of existing buildings that don't quite fit, right? So there's got to be some, at least a willingness and a flexibility to say, how do we make this work? All right, it's not quite, it's not like, we wouldn't build it from scratch this way, but love the idea. How do we make this work? So it's that attitude. I mean, that's, to me, that's like number one, too.
Okay, all right. Great, great questions. Red?
Thanks.
Thank you.
I see the key to making this plan succeed is the ombudsman. What is the model for that? Is that a city employee? Is that a full-time job?
Normally, it's a city employee, yeah, that's, that has that responsibility, along with probably other responsibilities. But they are, because they don't necessarily have to do the work themselves. They are really connecting the business with who is going to move that forward. But they are staying with the business so that the business knows, I have somebody to call. Yeah, so I'm going to be shepherding this through the process. Dave, it looks like you have a comment.
Yeah, okay. And when you say city employee, is that like our, our deputy city manager who's in charge of economic development, or is that somebody in, in the community development who issues the permits, or?
Yeah, you may have an answer for this.
So during the LEAP program, what, two years ago, we identified the LEAP team. That was one of the outcomes of that, and that was really myself and Scott and the Connie or Sam at that time. And if anybody came to the city sniffing around at all about wanting to do economic development, we three would drop what we were doing and go meet with them. And then, and then we would determine who's the, who's the right person to, based on what their issues were, who's the right person to sort of take the lead, whether it was community development, or deputy city manager, or in some cases, cases, myself, and in some cases, Eric, if it was a, if it was a harbor site. And so we really had a, a tiger team that was the, that was the initial point of contact, and that, that still exists. And when Scott gets a call last week, the, the three of us will sit down with somebody and talk through where their international school might be based in Morro Bay.
And do you, do you see that kind of team approach working, or is it a single leader who is the person everybody knows to go to, the, the champion?
Well, we, we recommend that, that there be a, a person that's told to everybody. Then there's the team that works together, because they obviously work together. And there's always many doors that a business can come through, you know, and so that door, whoever talks to that business first is usually the policy is, okay, they're kind of in charge of it. But often, you want to make sure that, that businesses know, particularly existing businesses, know the person to call, you know, that this is the person, this is the point person. It's usually your economic development manager. In this area, you're, you have several hats. So in a lot of cities, there's an economic development manager, and that's his only hat. So he becomes the ombudsman. Here, you have many hats with that. So, you know, the fact that the team is working together is great, because, you know, Dave, what you just pointed out is the harbor master. Those businesses need to probably be working with, with him to bring that together. And you want that team, your internal team, like that, but externally telling people, this is the ombudsman, you can call them. And then they typically know that they can call other people, and they will come through other doors.
It's just, it could be Iconnie, and it's, it's like one person. He's not going to have the answer to all the questions, but he's going to know the go-to person, and he might hand them off to, to Scott, and then he's going to follow up with Scott. Hey, what happened with, you know, ABC Business? And, and if Scott never calls him, then he's going to call Iconnie back, and then Iconnie's going to get, talk to Scott. So it's someone who stands up and says, has the responsibility of, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm your guy.
But this is not just a receiving role. This is also a driver role. You're, we are driving three initiatives. And so the person, I guess I'm seeing a single person who makes things happen, who coordinates maybe the team.
Yeah, I, I think that's going to be an internal decision, you know, from the management team of, do you, do you have the, the capacity and the capability to do that? We see the ombudsman is, is kind of the, it's your message to businesses, here's somebody that you can call. This is who you can go to. When you're talking about the initiatives, particularly in number three for the city, because we're talking about physical improvements, we're talking catalyst projects, your ombudsman may or may not be involved with that. You know, we're really talking about, you know, for existing businesses, who do I call? You know, and I know that I will be served, you know, that I have that point person.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to get through some questions and then open up for public comment if we have a chance. As far as, I'm kind of interested in implementation. So did you say you'd be part of putting an implementation plan together with the city? Is that, is it?
What did I say?
Did I understand that?
What?
So, I mean, we have some, we have some ideas here, but I mean, to develop implementation plans, whether it's the top priorities of branding, wayfinding, things like that, is that something you're going to be facilitating, is that?
No, I think that what we have here, is what, is what we have. I mean, there's four activities, hopefully, that a business organization would want to take on, you know, and these are four very distinct activities. And then there's four for the city that are distinct, that you lead with those. What I think that we're recommending is that with Initiative 1 and 2, you know, if you so choose, and the business organization so chooses to work with you, you have to work that out. And with, with that business organization, setting out a plan of how will we move these four, four things forward, it'd be important. And, yeah, there's detail in here in your plan about moving those forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And we are meeting with the chamber tomorrow.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, same presentation.
Okay, and unless there are any other questions, I just wanted to open up for public comment. As I look over my shoulders, anybody for public comment? Come on up, please. The mic's right over here. Welcome. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. If you haven't met me, I am Juliana Morris. I'm the Operations Manager and Manager of Member Engagement for the Chamber of Commerce. So I'm very pleased to be here and hear this presentation in detail. As Audrey mentioned, we'll be going over it again tomorrow. But on behalf of the chamber, I just wanted to let all of the city leadership know that the chamber is very excited about these ideas. These are the types of proposals and visions that we are all about at the Chamber of Commerce these days. We're all about convening community stakeholders and thinking outside of the box and being a little bit bigger visioning. So again, we will be having the workshop, a very small focus group tomorrow, with some of our chamber members. So we're excited to report back on that, and just look forward to working together with all of you. So I think that's it.
And what time tomorrow and where?
It's going to be 8:00 AM at the newest brewery in North Morro Bay, Three Stacks and a Rock. Highly recommend for their, for their beers and pizza as well.
Maybe not at 8:00.
At 8:00 AM, you're-
Not at 8:00.
Okay, they start early.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none? Okay, hey, Rick.
Most of you know me as Rick Sauerwine, the Capital Projects Manager. I'm here today as Rick Sauerwine, the guy who's planning to transition away from the city in a few months, and who's been looking around for about the last year at opportunities up and down the coast with the development partners, as far away as San Diego, Orange County, the Central Valley. And I want to convey to you some of the things that I've learned through that process. And I think at the very top of the list is how important our general planning effort is to generating interest and commitment, showing community commitment to moving things forward. The things that you've heard today are right on target when it comes to building that shared vision. Incredibly important. People aren't going to invest their money in a community unless they know that there is that shared vision. Thirdly, I can't tell you how disappointed I am at the turnout here today. And I think it, it's indicative of our major challenge here in the community, and that's generating the interest and enthusiasm and the energy to turn things around in the community. Probably one of the poorest-attended meetings you guys have been at in a long, long time.
There's no controversy.
And, and that's a shame, and we need to change that. It's incredibly important that we do. And so I think you've got a great report here. I am curious as to why the Tri-W site was not identified as a target of opportunity, and also why we haven't considered partnering with state parks in developing a more lineal approach to other business development opportunities, not just in the Embarcadero, but up and down our coastline.
Thanks, Rick. Do you want to respond to that?
I believe that Tri-W, that is not in the city yet, is that correct? It is in the city, but, but, yeah, it had some challenges on it, I think is why we didn't take a, take a look at it. Yeah.
Carol? Carol, public comment? Thank you. Okay, thanks. Anybody else for public comment? Thanks.
I'm Carol Truesdale, and been here since 1995. It's a very, very good report. In answer to your question, sir, a lot of the people in our community are working. The time of this meeting is during the day, therefore, they are not able to attend. Even though information is disseminated out there, it's, it's not feasible for them. So I think that's one of the main reasons, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thanks, Carol.
Going back to properties and, and watch properties, I think it's probably on our watch list. When we look for opportunity sites and catalyst sites, we're really looking for those that have the opportunity or are going to be on the market. And we start with those that are on the market or for sale. So you'll notice in the report, we have catalyst sites, opportunity sites, and then we have watch sites. And those watch sites means they're not on the market, but these are great sites, and they, they should be watched. And so that's probably one of those. And I know that the city had been discussing that, and I believe it's in the general plan, or it's, it's been discussed otherwise. Yes. I, I would just like to follow up with, some of the comments that, that he made about the investments are, are right on, too, about, you know, what, what you're doing moving forward. And one of the reasons why, to get people engaged is, is why we did the Economic Centers, because the smaller the piece that you can get, the more engagement. And I won't say it'll take a quick time. It will take time, but you want to keep going back and back and back. You know, you're going to find probably downtowns which are normally already organized, you know, are the early adopters of something like this, you know. And what we're doing here is, you know, they may not like this plan at all. And I can tell you, when we were out at North Main, I think it was the manager of Spencer's, we sat down with them outside, and we were watching the people come for their coffee. And I mean, what a great location is there. And we talked to them, and it's like, nope, not interested. Nope, not interested. What if you did a little tree planting in the parking lot? Just a little tree planting. Nope, not interested. We're fine. You know, about an hour and a half. Gee, do any buses stop here to buy groceries? How many, how many people do you get off the freeway? What if you could increase your, your business by 5%? Hmm. Didn't say you liked it, but didn't say not interested. So it takes time. You know, it takes time to be introducing these concepts to business owners. Again, they're, they're busy, they can't come, they can't always champion. So they're, and they're also going to think that you're going to do it for them, you know, which is not the case. This is going to be public-private, because you have limited resources to do this. So the fact that you're trying to bring resources to them by engaging these, you know, service providers and helping them, too. And, and so, well, that's okay. I think a business organization is really good to help you keep convening these people. And you're not forcing it upon them, you're asking them to engage in this process. And hopefully, by putting it in smaller pieces, it will help. Because oftentimes, like you say, it's, when it's this big, okay, I don't know where I fit. You know, I don't know what I need to do about it. But if it's at this level, because I live here, I work here, okay, I can do something about that.
Okay, any other comments? I'm just kind of curious. I think, you know, this is the presentation, which is great. Thank you. We did discuss how we proceed with this on our goal, so we definitely have the opportunity to bring this back as an agenda item and perhaps, you know, kick it off in another format at a time where we can draw in more, you know, maybe a different announcement, draw some people in, and have that. And maybe that's a discussion point for the rest of council on how we roll this out. Certainly, it is on our goals that are coming out as far as how we can work forward on this, this action plan. But it seems like it'd be another opportunity for us to revisit this as a council, you know, publicly, and maybe discuss some different ideas and approaches, or the same ideas, but just gather more-
Or the same ideas, but just gather more input from that, yeah, so.
And I'd like to point out, this is a draft, and we will be finalizing it. We're going to make some edits. We wanted to take comments, and we'll make those, you know, we heard someday, we'll clarify some things in here, and then we'll get that back to you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, any closing?
Got a minute or two. So I think I heard, I just want to clarify, because I think there was some back and forth, that of the three main initiative areas, your recommendation essentially is that groups other than the city take the lead in those, and the city with the ombudsman be the lead for initiative area number three.
Yes.
It says the ombudsman will actively support initiatives 1 and 2 as well, and be the point person for businesses. So it's actually, I see it in all three.
And I think it's, what I heard is it's whether it's the supporting role or the leading role of...
Yeah. Well, I would suggest for initiative 1 and 2. And particularly for 1, the city is going to be very involved. It's a partnership. But we're, we would suggest that the private sector and a private sector organization, a business organization, you know, take the leadership in pushing that forward, convening meetings. They do that very well, you know, to convene meetings. Now, the work, you know, the support work that needs to happen may happen with the city. I mean, the wayfinding, you know, is going to come back to the city to help that move forward. I mean, there's no doubt about that because the organizations typically don't have the capacity to move something like that forward. But you certainly want input to that process. But I think it's better to have the organization do that leadership role in pulling together people, and then you supporting that effort.
That's consistent with one of the things Roger Brooks communicated in community branding was that the wrong element to have leading your branding effort was the city.
Yes.
Because private organizations are more adept at leading those sort of efforts. And I guess that goes to one of, the last point on the slide there, shared purpose philosophy, you might say, shared vision. And just in my observation, it seems like that's, that's really an essential thing for Morro Bay is to develop a shared vision for those, for those four centers that is shared between, and I'd almost put the staff last in this, you know, as the supporting element to help implement, but shared between the business community and the resident community that goes to those areas and the city leadership, the city council. Because if, my sense is if the staff gets out sort of in front trying to communicate, here's our vision for this, that is, what's your observation when that happens?
Well, I think for any city, you guys are in a city, is that when businesses feel like the city's pushing it on them, you know, and that's, that's not what you want, you know, because it's government coming in and telling me what I have to do. And that, that's not what you want. You have gone out and asked for some expertise to help you create economic activity, you know. And what we're sharing with you is the way that you can create this because you don't have economic activity opportunities except for your catalyst sites, that this is incremental. But you have these centers that create economic activity that you would like to see increase. But that is up to them. You know, they may be perfectly happy, and so they're not wanting you to tell them what they want. But when they get together, maybe as a center, they can say, you know what, this might be a good idea, but I don't like this in it. No one's, you know, we put a lot of ideas in here that can help you be creative in that and thinking out of the box. And part of, part of economic development is to think outside of the box and think about economic growth. You know, how do, how do we create that? So I think the city leading that is not a good thing. I don't see that it's successful unless you own it. You know, if you own it, you control it, then you're that property owner, and you can make it happen.
Just one final question that I think Marla's has already asked, but I haven't really heard a great answer to yet. And it's probably the most important question that's been asked all day today, and that's, what are really the market drivers for economic development in our community? And until we can answer that question, you won't find a lot of business cooperation because that's what's going to drive their business.
Thanks, Rick. Any other public comment? I think with that, we're right on mark for 5:30, unless there's closing comments from the council.
I don't have a comment, I have a question. I noticed that there are a number of just small edits that I would suggest making because there's some out-of-date information. So what's the best way to get that to you?
My card should be right there.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And you certainly could email me, or I'm sure that you could share them with Ikani.
Or at least copy Ikani's.
Yep, sure, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, and without, with that, without any more comments, we'll adjourn this portion of our special meeting. Thanks very much. Thank you.